And we do not take public comment on proclamations, but I will allow you to speak during public communications on items not on the agenda. So, thank you for understanding and look forward to your comments. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 special meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The City Council is conducting its meeting under state laws and the Ralph M. Brown Act. And the City Council is in attendance in the City Council Chamber along with city staff and members of the public. And we have no members of the City Council who are requesting this evening that we take action on an item that would allow them to participate in a meeting remotely due to emergency circumstances. And now if you will please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Councilmember Darlene?
Here.
Councilmember Francois?
Here.
Mayor Protem Haskew?
Here.
Mayor Silva?
Here.
And Councilmember Wilk is absent due to a scheduled trip.
I am very pleased this evening to be able to issue this proclamation to the Walnut Creek Education Foundation. This school year, the Walnut Creek Education Foundation is celebrating its 40th anniversary. The foundation was founded in 1983 after severe state funding cuts threatened the elimination of elementary school libraries. Over the last 40 years, WCEF has grown to become the main fundraising partner of the Walnut Creek School District and its seven schools. Then some 20 years ago, WCEF joined forces with the Los Lomas Foundation to create a stronger partner supporting some 5,000 students from K to 12th grade. Today's WCEF is a $1.5 million per year fundraising partner for these eight schools, supporting a variety of programs and classes to ensure that all students receive a comprehensive education. Throughout its history, WCES had been a volunteer-driven 501(c)(3), and I am proud to have once served on its Board of Directors. The goal of this anniversary celebration is simple: to celebrate, engage, and honor the work of WCEF volunteers over the last 40 years. So as mayor and a former volunteer for WCEF and board member, I am pleased to recognize on behalf of all of us on the Walnut Creek City Council the 40th anniversary of the Walnut Creek Education Foundation and to thank the foundation for its work to provide accessible and enriching education for students who attend public schools in Walnut Creek. And if Joanna Grossman will meet me at the podium, I will present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Silva, and esteemed members of the City Council. Tonight, I stand before you as a proud representative and as the executive director of WCEF. As the child of two retired schoolteachers in Sacramento, this is my dream job to be able to support our teachers and our students here. And I also want to recognize our co-presidents this year, Erin King and Ina Rasputik. We stand before you with a deep sense of gratitude and pride as we accept this proclamation, recognizing the invaluable contributions of the volunteers and donors who have laid the foundation of support for eight public schools, thousands of students, and our greater community. And I say that again, it's the volunteers and the donors that I stand here representing. And again, I'm very honored to do so. Rita Pearson is an educator. She once proclaimed that every child deserves a champion. And the wonderful and unique thing about WCEF is that we are champion for students and teachers. And so more champions and more teachers for students is exactly why we exist. We want to be a funding source that is stable for critical needs for our schools and enable our expert teachers and administrators to do the jobs that they do so beautifully every day. At Los Lomas High School, our impact extends far beyond numbers. Mayor Silva wonderfully summarized our 5,000 students as well as our 3,300 families. It really translates into tangible support for those 5,000 students. And the impact extends far beyond members. It touches the lives of educators, it enhances the learning environment, and it fosters connections within our diverse school communities. At Los Lomas High School, where I have a senior, seven distinct elementary schools and middle school communities converge, forming a rich tapestry of diversity. And WCEF is really that unifying thread that brings those schools and that community together. Through the generosity of our donors, we weave a fabric of equity in education as well, ensuring that every single student receives the same type of education through our funding. We cultivate an environment where every student, irrespective of their background, can not only thrive, but also succeed. And can I allow Erin King to say a few words?
Sure.
So in reflecting on WCEF's 40 years of service, our mission statement serves as our guiding light. WCEF is a 501(c)(3) volunteer-driven nonprofit whose purpose, as encapsulated in our mission statement, is to deliver comprehensive programs and wellness initiatives that empower every student. The word "potential" was carefully chosen, for we cannot predict the future of 5,000 students as they are yet to unfold. However, we steadfastly believe that a rich education, complete with creative outlets and hands-on activities driven by student choice, are the keys to unlocking their full potential. Founded in 1983 by a dedicated group of parents, WCEF emerged in response to a shortfall of state funding. Over the years, we have faced challenges, but each time, our community rallied, raising over $15 million to preserve essential components of education, including art, music, libraries, wellness, and so much more. This is a true testament to our community's collective determination to provide students with the resources they need and deserve. And I'm going to ask Ina to come up and finish it off.
Looking ahead, our goal for this academic year is to raise $1.5 million. This ambitious target will fund 20 salaries of elementary art, music, and science lab teachers and specialists, 12 additional elective classes for middle schoolers, credentialed librarians, 13 additional elective classes at Los Lomas High School, and support for the Los Lomas Wellness Center as well as College and Career Center. We extend our sincere gratitude to the more than 900 donors who stand with us in support of WCEF and our schools, our 40th anniversary platinum business partners, Kaiser Permanente and Smile Power, and our local business partners. We also acknowledge our partner districts Superintendent Marie Morgan, Superintendent Dr. John Nickerson, and the Walnut Creek School District, Los Lomas Teachers and Staff, as well as our PTA, PTO, and PTSA partners at our eight schools. Their support is a cornerstone of our success. In closing, we acknowledge that it truly takes the village, and ours is vast and remarkable. Mayor Silva and esteemed City Council members, your recognition tonight reinforces that great schools are the connective tissue of our community. Together, let us continue to build a future where every student has the opportunity to thrive, learn, and becomes engaged thoughtful leaders our community and world so desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening. It will be a few minutes before public communications is opened because we have a few other items on the agenda in the meantime. The next item is a presentation from the city staff and I think the nonprofit partner on the economic and social impact of arts and culture in Walnut Creek. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of the council. My name is Elizabeth Orcutt. My pronouns are she/her. And I'm proud to be our Community Relations Manager for the City of Walnut Creek's Arts and Recreation Department. And tonight, I come with more really great news. So I will be presenting the Economic and Social Impact Study of Nonprofit Arts and Culture Organizations and Their Audiences Here in the City of Walnut Creek, how it directly impacts us from this national study. This newly released iteration of the survey is building upon a 30-year legacy. So they know what they're doing. They've implemented the work of brilliant economists and continue to develop and enhance the way that they're giving us these numbers. So before I dive into those numbers, though, and how they pertain to us here in the City of Walnut Creek, I want to highlight again that Americans for the Arts, the national organization hosting this survey, uses complex methods and calculations derived by those economists to provide this trusted data. It will help us increase support for arts and culture, inclusive equitable policies and programs, and a thriving local workforce. When we invest in arts and culture, we invest in an industry that strengthens our economy and builds more livable communities. I want to encourage you to picture a recent arts and culture experience that you have had. And I know you're all wonderful supporters of the arts and culture industry here. So start to picture what that process looks like, all of the steps that you go through to make that a successful experience for you, your family, and your friends. Perhaps it's from purchasing the tickets, getting your tickets scanned at the door by our smiling staff, scanning said tickets, making your dinner reservations, parking in the garage, perhaps a rideshare, taking BART, your means of getting there, and also the technicians that are onsite designing, operating the lights and the music, perhaps even the performance or exhibition that represents endless hours of rehearsal and practice. This single experience is multifaceted and representative of this thriving industry. Of the facts and figures that we'll continue to dive into tonight, if you walk away with two, I would love for them to be these two. So let me know if you have dreams about them tonight. But in 2022, arts and culture, our nonprofit arts and culture organizations and their audiences generated 36.1 million in economic activity in Walnut Creek. Attendees at the City of Walnut Creek's nonprofit arts and culture events spent an average of $34.64 on top of the price of their admission and onsite refreshments. So that's in addition to those costs. That's the average spend. So zooming back out a little bit, this survey, it's truly a collective effort. Americans for the Arts partnered with almost 300 local, regional, and statewide organizations, and it includes detailed findings from 373 studies, including all 50 states and Puerto Rico, ranging in population size from 4,000 to 4 million. So quite the array. This study could not have been completed with said participants, and the City of Walnut Creek's Arts and Recreation Department is really proud to be one of these partners, research partners. Separate of the economic analysis that takes place for this study, this survey was comprised of two main parts: an audience intercept survey and data reported directly by nonprofit arts and culture organizations. To measure the impact of spending by audiences here in Walnut Creek, data was collected from nearly 2,000 attendees between July 2022 and June of 2023. We used passive promotion and ramped up targeted solicitation at 36 shows where we used support from staff and volunteers. Of that, data collected directly by the participating nonprofit organizations, we worked with 29 really closely, and so we are really grateful for them, and I'll get to their names in a moment here. But of those 29 directly related, they have an aggregate total attendee of almost 450,000 in 2022 alone. That's reported directly from those 29, so as you can imagine, if we were working with even more organizations, what that number would look like, and that's all included here in this study. The spending by their audiences, that nearly 450,000, is directly responsible for 15.6 million. And I mentioned those participating organizations. I will leave this up here for just a brief moment because while the Lesher Center may be the biggest influence, these 29 organizations provided incredibly valuable data that helped us shape the full picture of nonprofit arts and culture here in Walnut Creek. So we are really grateful for the time that they took out of their busy nonprofit schedules to participate and provide information for us. We're grateful for that, but we're also grateful for the arts and culture that they contribute to our city as a whole on the regular. So arts and culture is commerce. Even though it's often lauded as an amenity that improves community livability, which is true, it's important that they receive the proper recognition as businesses. They employ people locally, purchasing supplies and services from nearby businesses, and engage in the marketing and promotion of their cities and regions. In fact, their very active doing business has a positive impact on our local economy. We're proud to contribute data gathered through this survey to the city's Economic Development Action Plan that's currently being created by staff and alongside with our community partners. So the information from this study will be reflected in that analysis as well. So here's that 36.1 again. So again, let me know if you have dreams about it tonight. But in 2022, arts and culture organizations and their audiences generated $36.1 million in economic activity in Walnut Creek. 20.5 of that is spending by the organizations themselves, whereas the 15.6 is event-related audience spending. You might be curious how this compares to the last Arts and Economic Prosperity Study that happened in 2017. And while it's not recommended that we directly compare, it's a little bit of apples to oranges, if you will, I will share some information if we can keep three things in mind: that in addition to ongoing recovery from the effects of COVID-19, the methods and economic calculations used to measure the fiscal impacts have changed. So those economists that we're working with, they're continually changing that structure. Plus, the different activities, groups, and individuals have been surveyed and cannot be directly compared. Lastly, the latest survey includes an additional social impact markers that were not previously implemented. So with those caveats in mind, the total economic activity from the 2017 survey, which covered years 2015 to 2016, was higher at 41.5 million. And this comes as no surprise to us due to the post-pandemic decrease in audience numbers across the country, across the industry, and it's reflected here as well. However, as you can see, the average dollar amount spent per person has increased from $31.90 to $34.64. Arts and culture jobs are highly local in nature. Dollars spent on human resources typically stay within a community for longer, thereby having a greater local economic impact, if you can imagine all the multipliers that take place with that. So this economic activity directly supported 593 jobs in Walnut Creek and generated $5.9 million in tax revenue. In the same vein of retaining local residents and their discretionary dollars, here in the community, let's dive into audience spending for a moment. For this survey, "local" is defined as a resident of Contra Costa County. So when people attend a cultural event, they often make an outing of it, as we were picturing in the beginning there, perhaps dining, paying for parking, public transit, enjoying dessert or a nightcap after a show, and returning home to pay for childcare or pet care. Attendees of the City Walnut Creek's Arts and Culture Events spend that average of $34.64 on top of the price of admission and onsite refreshments. This is vital income for local merchants and a value add that few industries can compete with. This spending generated a total of $2.6 million in tax revenue. Of the nearly 2,000 audience survey respondents here in Walnut Creek, we captured their zip codes, and so that led us, of their primary residents, excuse me. And so that allows us to determine which attendees were local residents of the county and which were visiting from outside the county, which garnered some interesting information for us. In the City of Walnut Creek, a little over 70% of those 450 attendees were residents, and 28.2 were non-residents. Non-local attendees do spend an average of about 40% more than our local from the county attendees, which can be expected for additional transportation, overnight stay, and additional meals. Of the non-local survey respondents, a little over 93% reported that the primary purpose of their visit to Walnut Creek was specifically to attend the performance event exhibit venue or facility where they were surveyed. This is up from 65.5% in 2017, which I found interesting. 77.2% of non-local attendees responded that they would have traveled elsewhere for a similar arts and culture experience. And so to me, this makes me really proud of the investments that we've made in arts and culture here in the City of Walnut Creek, in doing so and supporting the Headliner Series at the Lesher Center for the Arts, for Center Repertory Company, all of our wonderful, at the Bedford Gallery, all of the investments we're making is making a difference because people are wanting to travel. So we want them to travel here. So thank you for supporting those investments. And I've been sharing how the arts and culture industry powers our economy and supports local jobs, but it is important to note the social impacts as well. As you can see by these numbers, audiences are in agreement that the activity or venue is inspiring a sense of pride in the neighborhood or community, that they would feel a great sense of loss if the activity or venue were no longer available. And the venue or facility is an important pillar for them within the community. So it's clear from our personal experiences and the data from AEP6 that shared cultural experiences strengthen a sense of belonging and community pride. So with that, the essentialness of this industry, when the arts are funded. So we have this updated data that showcases their positive effects on our economy and the lives of ourselves and our neighbors. In fact, these survey findings tell us that even if someone in our community isn't directly interacting with the arts, which we all believe that they should, even if they're not, they're still benefiting from them and having them here in our community. So it's undeniable that arts and culture experiences are an integral part of what makes Walnut Creek a thriving city. So some of our biggest champions are asked of the City Council and everyone in the chambers tonight is that you keep these facts and figures in mind and share them far and wide as you're promoting arts and culture throughout Walnut Creek and the greater region. Together, we can share the impactful role of arts and culture. I have a couple thank yous, but I did want to pause if you had any questions for us.
Questions from council members for Elizabeth. Interesting data, and I look forward to seeing what else you want to tell us.
Thank you. I do want to wrap with three quick thank yous to pay special acknowledgement to the volunteers, the ushers, and the staff that helped promote our participation in the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. They helped us solicit those survey responses and to help spread the news that we were collecting information. To the community organizations that we showcased and have on a handout I can share with others that perform or do business in Walnut Creek, and especially here at the Lesher Center for the Arts. To all of the individual patrons that took a couple minutes out of their cultural experience to complete the survey. You can imagine, you're there to see a show. Why would you want to stop and take a quick survey? But it was really useful information for us to have and will help us to increase our arts and culture here. So that's really valuable information that we're grateful for. And then lastly, to you, thank you for your time and attention this evening, for allowing me to present these really exciting findings and your ongoing support and leadership of arts and culture here in the City of Walnut Creek.
The Mayor Protem, first of all, thank you. And thank you to all of the representatives of our arts organizations who are here tonight. The Mayor Protem has questions or a comment, and I actually do have a couple of questions. Would you let?
No. Would you like to do questions? Because I'm only going to be saying nice things.
Well, my questions are nice. Okay, I'll ask my couple of questions. You had 449,289 attendees. That's not just at the Lesher Center. Now, I did see, so we were looking at other venues and events. Can you give us a couple of examples of the other venues and events?
Certainly. And the meat of that to keep in mind is that those are the survey responses. And so with that economic analysis and all of their number crunching, they're able to expand that for what it would look like for the city as a whole. So that's how they use that, the survey responses we collected in person at the Lesher Center, plus the data from those 29 organizations. So they use those to kind of help us garner what it would look like for the city as a whole. So while we didn't do direct audience intercept surveys, is what they call them, between either digital or paper ones that we had onsite, we didn't do those at a lot of our other locations necessarily, but that's where that data from those participating organizations proved really helpful.
So for example, the Art and Wine Festival, because I saw the Chamber of Commerce was acknowledged on there. So we weren't out doing audience intercept surveys while people were enjoying an Art and Wine Festival?
Correct. Yes, we were not. But it's included.
We're able to extrapolate the data.
Exactly. That's a much better word for it.
And when is the next time we would do this survey? Because it's labor-intensive. I can recognize that.
It's hosted every five years. This one was postponed, I believe, 16 months or so due to COVID-19. So I would imagine they will do five years from this. They won't go back.
So everyone's doing the survey at the same time, so you get data from other regions and communities as well?
Correct.
Great.
It's more of a cross-section.
Any other questions?
First, thank you very much for all you're doing. Thank you for all the work that went into this. This is, I assume, part of the strategic plan process that the Leshers putting together. Maybe if you could just put a little bit in context of what you're planning on doing with this information?
Certainly. Well, some of the numbers, I think it's been exciting to connect with our managers and especially our general manager, the Lesher Center for the Arts. She might have, and we actually have our executive director of Diablo Regional Arts Association here with us tonight, Peggy. So if you want to capitalize on this, but it is exciting to see which numbers stand out to our different managers, how we're interacting with them. In fact, one number that was really lighting me up today, I shared with Carolyn earlier, is that I think it was over 35% of our non-local attendees that were surveyed, it was their first time at the Lesher Center. And to me, that is a huge win, and that's showcasing that our investments in our increased marketing, our thinking of ourselves with a small regional footprint, is really paying off because that seems like a really big number to me that I was excited about.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Carolyn Jackson, General Manager at the Lesher Center. This is very directly tied to our strategic planning in that one of the goals that the council set as we looked at coming back from COVID was how is the center going to be a regional draw at the same level as it was previously? What's going to be needed for that? And we really focused on programming being the driver for that programming and then marketing that really successfully. So I think what we're seeing with these numbers is it makes a big difference when we attract outside of the county in terms of the impact that we then have in Walnut Creek and on our local businesses. And it just quantifies the value beyond, like Elizabeth said, the value to our community of what we're doing, but the value of the Headliner Series, Center Rep, Bedford Gallery, the scale and quality of what we do is essential to then driving that arts tourism, driving that economic activity downtown and making our entire downtown and city really vibrant. So I think it just, again, was committing to like, we're on the right track, right? We're seeing the results despite the impacts of the pandemic. We're still seeing really large numbers from this economic impact study, even though we're still on that road to recovery. So thank you.
The 36 million stuck with me. I remembered it. But I'm wondering, have other theaters in San Francisco, or maybe Palo Alto, other more regional theater, did they experience a similar drop in revenue, or do we not know?
I don't know about the exact numbers in revenue, but when we were getting the initial results from the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, their project leads did reach out to be like, just so you know, the reported attendance compared to the previous study is lower, and this is what we're seeing across the board. Nobody's reporting higher numbers. So they kind of gave us that heads up of like, this is going to have an impact. We don't know how much it is. We haven't done the analysis, but we know that the reported attendance is lower.
And that was covering the years, like 2020 to 2022?
For organizations reporting their audience attendance, it was the fiscal year 2022. So depending on your organization, that was either calendar year 2022 or July 21 to June 22.
Thank you.
And remind me, do you have national figures, or are they still processing that data?
We do have that. I don't have it quite at the ready.
Did I blank out at one point?
No, I just don't have that one memorized, actually. But we do have it, so I could provide that to you.
All right. Thank you.
Again, very reflective.
So we are consistent with other regional theaters, Broadway in New York?
Broadway is actually not included in these, similar to the same with movie theaters. We were very much on standard, and we're actually, we are blowing the median out of the water as well from our cohort. So you could break one out by your population. So within our population cohort of 50,000. one out by your population. So, within our population cohort of 50,000 to 99, we blow that median out of the water.
Thank you. And just a shameless plug, if you haven't seen A Tale of Georgia McBride, it is fabulous. It's edgy, it's funny, it's entertaining. And one of the actors cut his finger the night of the performance. We were there. The show stopped. We thought there was going to be a scream of, is there a doctor in the house? No need. Came back on. But, anyway, it's a fabulous production.
Yes, he's doing great. He's perfectly fine.
There's got to be some more to, it's got to go for another week or so, right?
It runs through November 26.
All right, there you go. Georgia McBride.
My turn.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. The theater, of course, has been one of the things that has made my heart go pitter-pat for many, many years. So, I want to emphasize that almost everybody who attends the theater goes away with a giant smile on their face. But, for those pieces of art, plays, and operas that are designed to be tragedies, and then they go away with the appropriate amount of sadness. The programs that we put on for the youth, the Arts Access, would you tell us a little bit about that, please?
I might bring our wonderful Executive Director of Diablo Regional Arts Association up to tell us. That's a program of DRAAs, is their Arts Access. She can tell us a little bit more about that.
Thank you. So happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. And, our Arts at Kids School Time programs started many years ago. And it was to bring kids from Title I schools to experience arts programs at the Leshur Center of the highest quality. They would not have had the opportunity to do otherwise. And it was more than just a field trip. We did study guides, we did pre and post activities in the classrooms. Our goal was to make sure these students had access to the wonderful programs at the Leshur Center. I must admit, since COVID, it's been a little bit of a challenge, but I'm excited to share that we've got, we're working with four major performances this upcoming year, with a focus on Title I schools. And we're also going to be doing more in the schools. We're expanding our artists and residency program. We have 11 artists that will be visiting classrooms in various community organizations. So, hopefully, that will have impact as well. That's kind of the evolution of the program. And we hope that will make a huge impact for these students as well. So, thank you.
So, is there a variety of things presented at the theater? For example, what kind of plays, what kind of age groups, what kind of classical performances are there?
You're speaking to my marketing heart right now. So, thank you for teeing that up. There's something for everyone at the Leshur Center for the Arts. We have all genres of performance art, dance, music, theater, musicals, a wide range in each of those areas as well. So, if you're a tribute band fan, they're there for you. If you're a jazz fan, they're there for you. If you want to see wonderful ballet, we have that as well. So, there's this huge range of opportunities with both our in-house programs and our wonderful rental clients and our cornerstone producers, some of which are here, ICU California Symphony, who have been longstanding clients of ours. And, in addition to the performing arts, you can have a visual art experience with the Bedford Gallery and with our public art walking tours. And with every ticket to the Leshur Center, you are able to go before the show to visit the current exhibition in the gallery. So, make time not just to go to dinner beforehand, but to make sure you can stop in the gallery before you go find your seats, so that you have that full, well-rounded experience.
Thank you. The commercial is done. The, the only other thing I want to note is, Elizabeth, I think this is your first formal presentation before the Council. You did a fine job.
Thank you.
And it's easier from this point forward. So, thank you very much.
It helps to have such exciting news to share with you. So, thank you again for your support.
Thank you very much. There's a, a large list of holiday entertainment as well. I announced a lot of it in the Mayor's Report that was recorded on Friday. So, but get your tickets fast, particularly to things like a Christmas carol. It is the Christmas carol for the Bay Area, according to the critics. Next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar this evening. Does any council member wish to speak to either of those items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, well, maybe. Does any member of the public wish to speak to us on the consent calendar? I don't see anything. All right. Now, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar items 2A and 2B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. To approve consent calendar items 2A and 2B, would the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Pro Tem, ask you.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Darlene.
Aye.
Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we're back for public comment on items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment on items that were not on our agenda this evening. This will include the proclamation that was referenced earlier. Under the Brown Act, the Council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, may request clarification or refer the item to staff. And consistent with our handbook, Section 9.5, we will allow 30 minutes, up to 30 minutes at this point in time for public comment, and then we will defer any that exceed the 30-minute time limit to after the rest of our business items. Each person will have up to two minutes to speak. And so, I will call out your names. Amelia Whalen, Heidi Hernandez-Gatti, Craig Deviney, and Vincent Morales. If you will line up, that would be great.
All right. So, I should go for it? Okay. Hi, so I'm Amelia Whalen. I'm the Wellness Coordinator at Los Lomas High School. For those of you who know me, keeping this to two minutes is like a heroic act, but I'm going to do my best. But, I'm here to represent Los Lomas, and more specifically, the Wellness Center, which I oversee. To thank Walnut Creek Education Foundation for all the support that they've provided to us and our students over the years. They've had a vital role in supporting student mental health at our school for a very long time, and had a very important role in us creating the Wellness Centers in 2017. Fully understanding the importance of us having a comprehensive mental health space on campus, providing a safe community for students, and extending services to them and their families. Because we've been able to create these centers, we've been able to support student mental health in many ways. Last year alone, approximately 500 students came through, either seeking some sort of ongoing mental health support or drop in services. I really can't emphasize enough the importance of WCEF and us being able to accomplish this task, and being able to de-stigmatize mental health at our school population, and just ensure that students and families get access to the support that they need. Through their ongoing support, we're able to continue doing this. And I am very, very grateful for everything that's been done for our students, because of everything that they've offered. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Could I just have one quick, just say thank you for everything you guys do at the Wellness Center. My children went through Los Lomas before then, and my daughter lost a friend to suicide. And then, when she went to college, she started in a peer support program there. And when I told her that it was now happening at Los Lomas, she was so grateful, because, you know, hopefully, you guys could reach kids like her friend before they get to that point. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your kind words. Appreciate it.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Hernandez-Gatti, and I'm proud to stand in front of you as the Board President of the Walnut Creek School District. But, really, I'm going to speak about my own experiences with WCEF. For 40 years, WCEF has supported the Walnut Creek community with a sharp focus on ensuring our children have access to the best education our community can provide. This institution has been powered by generations of volunteers who have supported WCEF and the Walnut Creek School District community, growing from modest supportive libraries to providing essential funds that cover the education funding gap that prioritize our children not only in the classroom, but as you've just heard, through their wellness and well-being. I joined the WCEF Board when my oldest child, who's now a senior at Los Lomas, was in the first grade as a site representative for Walnut Heights Elementary. And over the years, since I first supported WCEF from a $650,000 a year organization in just these 10 years, we've seen a thoughtful move to collaborative fundraising and a foundation that supports $1.5 million in essential programming for the Walnut Creek School District and our Los Lomas High School. WCEF has been an integral partner in the provision of an excellent education for our students, for their wellness and well-being, and for our community as a whole. It is an expression of what we all do when we act together. Thank you, WCEF, to the current Board of Directors, and the generations of volunteers, past, present, and future, for taking the time to invest in our students and our community. I look forward to being a supporter of this institution that plays such an important role to our children's education in our community for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And could you take a moment and introduce the Superintendent who's here, and perhaps other members of the governing board?
I would be delighted to. I would love to welcome Marie Morgan, who's the Superintendent of the Walnut Creek School District. And we have current and past Board members, Amy Moss and Katie Penya here with us today.
Thank you.
I think it's safe to say that WCEF has also provided a pipeline for leadership in our community that shouldn't be underestimated.
Thank you very much. The next speaker looks very familiar. We were on this dais last night together for the Affordable Housing Forum. Thank you, Hiim Vincent. Nice to see you.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Morales. I'm the Chief Business Official at the Walnut Creek School District. And on behalf of our Jersey, I want to thank the city for recognizing and celebrating the 48th anniversary of Walnut Creek Education Foundation. They had been a vital force behind our students' success. The foundation's impact is tangible. Funding art, music, science, electives, among other things, that our schools and our students thrive. And for that, we're truly grateful. Congratulations to the WCEF for 40 years. Manny Morica?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Mayor Silva, council members. My name is Craig Deviney. I'm, my wife and I, Jennifer, have been living here in Walnut Creek for the last 18 years, raising our three boys. My oldest is now graduating from Los Lomas with, with Jack back here. And my youngest is currently a sixth grader at Tice Creek. And my wife and I have been supporting WCEF at the Gold Member level for the last five years. And I just wanted to share with, with you how it's impacted our lives the most, and that was probably through the opening of the Tice Creek School. I know that wouldn't have been possible without the funding that was provided by WCEF. We were attracted to the K-8, kind of smaller environment, allows the middle school kids to be big fish in a small pond instead of small fish in a big pond. And we liked the project-based learning, and we were really inspired by talking to the teachers, hearing their enthusiasm for opening this new school. So, it's been a big contribution to our lives, and we really appreciate the WCEF, Joanna Grossman, and all members of the WCEF for what they, they put into this organization. And thank you to City Council for, for recognizing them, the value it brings to our community, to our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are any other members of the public here this evening that would like to speak on an item not on, not on the agenda tonight? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Silva, esteemed members of the Council, and my Walnut Creek School District Board members, and of course, WCEF Board members.
Try to speak into the microphone. And to do that, you need to probably look at us more than the audience.
Okay, let me do that.
I know you want to make them feel comfortable, but then no one can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Sonali, a proud Walnut Creek parent. And I've also been a Walnut Creek Board Member for the last six years. With a daughter in sixth grade at Tice Creek, and a son who's a Los Lomas graduate, and now a freshman at U.C. Berkeley, I've had the opportunity to view the full spectrum of how WCEF is enabling our kids. During parent outreach as a side trap, I always emphasize that our contribution is an investment that I have personally seen maturing into successful returns. Without any doubt, the role of WCEF in providing elementary art, music, science, PE, and library is crucial. As a parent, I felt that it is in the middle, and especially high school, that the role of WCEF really kicks in, in high gear. Electives ranging from woodshop and auto shop to AP Lit, AP Computer Science, and numerous medical and engineering pathways, pathway classes to choose from, gives our kids the opportunity to explore and excel. The norm in the state of California is for high schools to have five periods. Even good school districts bordering the Silicon Valley are offering six. Our kids get seven. Talking to parents with elementary and even preschool-age kids, I find they immediately relate to this as something tangible that you can hold in your hand. It's your child's schedule comprised of seven periods. The sheer opportunity of being able to offer them 10 extra periods each week opens up possibilities and supports their potential towards a successful path after high school. Having recently traversed the competitive universe of college applications, I appreciate the fact that WCEF enables our students to bring a full high school experience to the table. It was because of the seven periods and the wide range of electives, both funded by WCEF, that my son was able to take 10 AP classes, an honors class, leadership for three years, and even squeeze in a TA position in his senior year. And each of those helped him get accepted at his dream school. Our kids are going to great universities or forging their paths wherever else their passion and creativity takes them. Because our community is fortunate to have this foundation, which catalyzes whatever we can give it into a gift that keeps giving.
So, please complete your sentence.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Salucha, and I am a mother of three kids in the school system. I have a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader. And I have also been a parent volunteer at WCEF. And I just have to say, I am beyond grateful to WCEF for the opportunities and the support that they provide all students from TK to 12th grade. When I look in this world that we're living in, it feels ever more competitive and demanding of our kids in particular. And the funds that are raised really gives our students the chance to explore interests, discover new passions from a very young age, like for their whole academic career, so that they can, I think, enter the world, graduate from high school with a little more direction and a little more guidance on what comes next. And it's so wonderful that we actually do all this with a keen focus on also their social, emotional well-being through the Wellness Center. So, I just want to thank WCEF and its community of donors for the gifts that we are giving to our children, and I'm so excited for another 40 years with WCEF. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to us on items not on the agenda? Then I will close public comment comments and bring it back to council. Thank you all very much for being here. And we are now going to the next item on our agenda, which is council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. I will start with the City Attorney. Do we have any reports on closed session announcements?
There are no reports this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager.
Yeah, good evening. Dan Buckshai, City Manager. I do have one announcement. I would like to acknowledge and congratulate our Deputy City Clerk, Amy Hevner, as this is her last meeting with us, as she will become the Town Clerk for the Town of Moraga come Monday. And I think I can safely speak for everyone that I'm really proud of Amy in accomplishing this. This is not an opportunity that just came out of the blue and fell in her lap. It's one that she's worked towards for the last several years. Amy started here at the city eight, almost nine years ago now. I think you're sneaking up on nine. And started as an executive assistant working in public works, and did that for four years. And while I'm sure she really enjoyed working with Heather in public work, she decided to move on over to the City Manager's office. I mean, you can't blame her for that, really, but, and took a position as an assistant to the City Clerk in 2019. And as we all know, within a year of doing that, COVID hit, and we transitioned to Zoom, which is a really big deal in city clerk world, running meetings. And I'm sure, as you all recall, Amy was the guru running the Mayor's Conference Zoom meetings, as there were some folks who were not well-versed in that technology. So, Amy ran that for quite some time and did a great So Amy ran that for quite some time and did a great job of doing so. And then Amy pursued her municipal clerk certification in 2021 and became our deputy city clerk in 2022. So this has been a nice progression and a lot of investment in Amy in professional growth, and it's nice to see it come to fruition, and wish you all the best, Amy.
All right, to the council members. Mayor Protem.
I didn't draw the short straw. Since we only had a week, it was hard to get some stuff in, but I managed. I went to the Walnut Creek Downtown Meeting, and they reviewed some of our holiday plans coming up, as well as we did for the board, a review of the Arts in August, and the review of the committee that gave the information about how maybe we should change it to something more completely summer. Won't sound as good as Arts in August, but we've got creative people. We'll solve that. We also heard about the Chinese delegation while our mayor was being a Chinese delegate in China. China sent some people so that we wouldn't miss her, and they had a lovely time learning about Walnut Creek. I also attended the Transpac meeting, and we're planning on sending out the information for the organizations that we support, for the elderly and the people who need assistance. And—see, did I write something? And that's it for that. And may I say that the Veterans Day surface commemoration that we had at the theater on Saturday was among the most moving that I think we've done in all the time I've attended them, and I've attended a great number of them. So thank you very much, Mayor Silva, and also Betty Burkhardt and all of the people that helped put it together. It was amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Darling.
It's only been a week, so this will be short. I did—the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force got together with a number of folks to have a workshop last night that Mayor Silva represented us at. We are going to be debriefing on that on Wednesday, and we'll talk about how wonderful you did helping to run the meeting. But there was a lot of good messages that came out of that. The focus was on myths around affordable housing, and I think you guys did a great job of dispelling some of it. And I—I even learned, as much as I've worked around this stuff, I learned a lot from it. MCE will be meeting later this week, and considering the city of Hercules joining MCE, I think at that point, there might be two cities left in Contra Costa County that are not MCE members. So we will be considering that this week, and I look forward to reporting that we let them come onboard.
Councilmember Francois.
Mayor, I have a few meetings later this week, but I had—did not have any in the last week, so no report from me.
All right. Well, I have a few things to report. First, I would like to tag on to the Mayor Protem and say thank you to the LeShur Center staff and the communications staff for everything you did to make Veterans Day come off so smoothly. And it is always an honor to be able to honor those who have served. And it was shocking, when I was looking at the data, to realize that over the 17 years I've been on this council, the number of times I've had to announce the number of veterans that we have, it's—it's down to 16 million and only 120,000 from World War II. And that's rapidly declining, because they are coming on to 100. And so we have to be mindful of that, I think, every day, that those who really set the framework from the middle of the 19th, 20th century to today have—are departing very rapidly now. But thank you again to staff for that help. I also want to thank staff for the work that they put in, the communications team, to help the Affordable Housing Forum last night. And that forum will be repeating virtually, and so hopefully, we can get a schedule for that, so we can post that and people can watch it. Because there was some interesting information, and Vincent Morales was a participant from the Walnut Creek School District, really representing employers. And he talked about 80% of the Walnut Creek School District's budget is in salaries, but they're not all about teachers. And just about every employee of the district is in need of affordable housing, because they don't meet the income requirements. They are rent burdened or cost burdened for housing to be able to live in the community. And I want to thank the chief and Stephanie Brynne, who are housing manager, who participated as well. And the chief was not only an interesting presentation on crime statistics related to multifamily housing is what it really came down to, but also you had some interesting statistics and studies just on housing affordability and its importance. And we have to keep things like that in mind as we talk about it. The—I did the farmer's market on Sunday, and I want to tell you, it was fascinating. I started at 10:30 rather than 10:00, and so I ran until 12:30. I had more people talk to me, new residents of the community. I was handing out every booklet that we could find. Oh, try the Arts and Rec Guide. It's almost stale, but use it as a guide for what you might be looking for, because the programs don't change that. Oh, here's the LeShur Center. Here's this. Oh, here's a map of the open space. Here's how you find it. That is—makes me feel so good, because there's—new residents are so excited to be—be here, and that's great, plus interesting conversations on other topics as well. This—today, I had the honor of welcoming 40 students from our friendship city of Keita City, Japan, which is right outside of Tokyo. They are eighth graders. They are visiting the students at Seven Hills. They have an exchange with Seven Hills School. And they have been here for 10 days. They had fascinating questions, really good questions, like, what's the city's specialty? I said arts. Or what makes this—you know, I wasn't quite sure what that meant, but you know, from an eighth grader, you'd think, hmm, okay, what do you mean? It's not agriculture. It's not manufacturing. It's arts, shopping and dining, healthcare. And even some of the local residents who were participating with them had an interesting comment that they learned something in the conversation. So that's a good thing. This week is the National Conference for the National League of Cities, and we will be making recommendations on federal policy advocacy points of view, and I will be in attendance, representing Walnut Creek. And last week, about leaders of the League of California Cities, so representatives of the policy committees, the division—regional divisions and departments, met to do a preliminary assessment of 500 pieces of input on what should be the focus of the League of California Cities for the coming year. No surprises. Out of the top 10 items, three of them were fiscal sustainability, which aligns with also the threats of the California Business Roundtable and the change in the way those—that would occur. And then public safety and housing and homelessness. So more to follow on that. Thank you all for what you do and what I know you will continuing—to continue to be thinking about as we go through the Thanksgiving holidays. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing. And this is a request to provide alternative public benefit for Phase 2 of the Waymark at the Walnut Creek Transit Village. And before we begin, and before staff begins, I'm going to ask each of us to report ex parte contacts.
I went out with Ryan McNamara this morning to walk the area to get an idea of the layout, so that's when we discuss the issue that's on the agenda tonight.
And I, too, spoke with Ryan this afternoon and exchanged some email messages about the item that's on the agenda.
I had a Zoom conversation, very short yesterday, a little bit trying to even figure out what we were talking about.
And I had a coffee meeting with Ryan McNamara and Brad Blake yesterday, and a phone conversation with Brad Griggs today. And no, I wouldn't tell them how I was voting. [laughter] Because I don't know yet. All right. We're going to start with Chip. Good evening. Set the stage.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council. My name's Chip Griffin. I'm a principal planner with Planning Division, Community Development. And tonight, we're going to take a look at a request from the Walnut Creek Transit Village in regards to the public benefits associated with the Waymark, specifically the Pringle Passage. Oh, that's—I had the same problem two weeks ago. There it is. Okay. So specifically, the Walnut—Walnut Creek Transit Village Phase 2, it's also known as the Waymark, requests that the city council allow a change to the public benefits associated with the increased building heights, height allowances from—a general plan amendment. I'm going to see if I can get rid of that. Request would be to exchange the benefit of public access through the Pringle Passage in exchange for limited use—limited public use of the Great Hall. All right. In context, I think we all know where the Transit Village is, but for those in the audience—and I am a planner, so I put the land use designation and zoning designations up there. It's mixed-use residential, and it's—it's a planned development zoning, PD 2113. I'm sure we all have memories of that. Shown here is the Walnut Creek Transit Village. Phase 1—in Phase 1 here, where the cursor is, is the new garage, the parking garage, which was Phase 1. Moving north is the original BART garage. This here is Phase 3, and Building 1 and Building 2 of Phase 3, and this would be the Pringle Passage area or alignment between the two buildings. Over here is Phase 3, and that is to be determined. We would expect a redesign for Phase 3 coming soon. In context, we have north-south running North California Boulevard here, Ignacio Valley Road in this—in this area, running east to west. And then we have the north-south Caltrans Corridor, and Pringle Avenue up here is the boundaries of this—of—the Transit Village. We also show the yellow line would be the alignment for the—for the rail. And then right in this area, right in the center, is this station. It's surrounded by the Golden Triangle to the north, the Business Park, the Ignacio Center to the east. We have Target down here to the southeast, and then here's the Vaya. So that's our—that's our surrounding context. And context for Phase 2 specifically, we have Building 1 and Building 2, the Pringle Stair over here, which I hope everybody's seen. It's beautiful. We have the Pringle Passage right in this alignment here between leading from Pringle to the—to the BART station itself. In this area, this building right here at the end is the Great Hall. And station access can be provided vehiculately with pedestrians and bikes here, and then pedestrians and bikes here. We also show this would be the gate at the other end of the Pringle Passage from the stair, and I think that—that—that does it. So the benefit package was approved by the city council in 2012 and included many entitlements, including a general plan amendments. And specifically for tonight, we're talking about a height increase of—the eastern—eastern side, which is shown here in blue. The height allowance originally was 35 feet, while this—this side where Phase 2 is, was 50 feet. So there's a general plan amendment to increase—to increase that entire—
I think you have that backwards. You were pointing at the Phase 2 and calling it—okay.
Well, this would be Phase—Phase 3. I'm sorry, Phase 2.
Just in case for those who are watching from home.
Okay, correct. That's—相是actually—相是1 and 2 right here, and Phase 3 in the green, which had a height limit of 35 feet over Phase 3. The general plan amendment brought the entire Walnut Creek Transit Village area into—to measure—a maximum allowance of 50 feet. And in doing so, the general plan—there's a general plan policy that allows the development to offer certain public benefits for that increased height. In this case, it was construction of the entire—or the parking garage first, before construction of the other phases. Reason for that is because those are surface parking lots and had to replace those—those parking lot—those parking areas while the other two phases were under construction. And that parking garage also included an expanded bus terminal, I—I think, and Mayor Silva will probably let me know if I'm right or wrong.
I'm sorry.
If there was 12 bus—if it was a 12-bus terminal previously—
I think that's pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, and it expanded to 15, correct. Okay. And also improved bicycle pedestrian facilities around and through the site. I'm going to—I'm going to bring up a map here, and it's—it's—there's a lot going on here. I—I get it. But it's the best representation of—the of bicycle and pedestrian circulation that I could find, and it was actually part of the entitlements. So what's shown here, focus on the brown arrows, if you can see them. Those are these arrows here. There's a cluster of them over here, and that just shows the bicycle circulation. There's bicycle circulation all kind of ends up right here, where there's lockers and and other facilities for—for the cyclists. So that's—that's—that was done. That was part of the public benefit. And also the green arrows. The green arrows represent pedestrian pathways. And as you can see, there's—if you couldn't—if the blue arrows weren't there, you would see a lot of green arrows. But as you can see, there's green arrows. There's—there's—a lot of pedestrian pathways, too, through and around the site. And it includes a passageway between Buildings 2 and 3 and Phase 2, and also between Buildings 3 and 4 in Phase 3. What this would do is—is eliminate this pathway here to—and folks would would just come around this way or go around this way, as they've always done. In the case of Phase 3, this has been the pedestrian pathway for decades, and—and I don't—I myself, in—in negotiating with the developer, with—this is—this is—this path is here to stay. So we'll make sure that—that this is designed a little bit better, put more—more defensible space, less attractive nuisance, and built for a pedestrian pathway. And moving forward, so what's the proposed benefit exchange? The—it's—in exchange for that access, Waymark proposes that the Great Hall be made available four times a year for specific events and—with specific restrictions. Those restrictions are listed in bullet points, and they're also in the staff report. The Great Hall, what is it? It's—it's this building. I think everybody's—everybody's at least seen it, if not have been in it. It's a beautiful building. It's right next to the entrance gates to the Great Hall. As you can see there, and we'll talk about public art, and the app—actually, the applicant will—will really focus on some public art. It's been brought out—brought out to these—to these columns here, but the use—the public benefit would be the use of—the Great Hall shown here. And I'll just run through some photos of the inside of the hall. It's—it's—it's a large space. Again, the applicant's going to go through some of the specifics of the space. And then we—there's—there's—lockoff rooms in there. There is, I think, at least beverage service, if not food service. We'll find that out. However, and as far as the public art that is within the Pringle Passage, we wanted to make sure that—that the art that's in the passage would still be available for public viewing. And the—we—we have worked out a—a solution for that, and it would—it would—it would allow a person to make a phone call or inquire with the leasing office to go see the public art, whether they're a individual or a group. They could either schedule it for a larger group or or get fairly quick access with the leasing department. It would be available during the regular office—office hours, and it would be—there would be signs at the gate here on the station side, and then at the stair for folks on directions on exactly how to do that. With that, staff recommends that the city council determine that the previously prepared environmental impact report is sufficient for this proposal and adopt a draft resolution approving the proposed public benefit to include the use of the Great Hall instead of private access over Pringle Passage. And as I said, Brad Griggs and—and an associate are here tonight, Ryan, I believe, is—is here tonight to answer any questions and provide a presentation.
Thank you very much. Let's see if council has any questions for staff. Councilmember Darling?
Just a quick one. Thank you for walking us through this. It's like a trip down memory lanes. The art inside—the The art inside the, the Pringle Passage, does it include the big planters and smaller benches? Are those part of the same installation?
I, I believe so. I, I was, I was not a part of when the, when the actual art package was approved-
Okay.
-with the Arts Commission. But it, it did change since we, since you saw it as a planning-
Yes, it did.
It did. And it does include certain installations, I think, to benches and planters in a form of tile mosaics? And, and, and other items that I'm sure, sure the applicant will be able to-
Okay.
-just go in full.
And just, I think you, you talked about this, but want to be very clear that we're not talking about Phase Three and that major thoroughfare through there. We're just talking about Pringle Passage tonight.
We are, we are not talking about Phase Three.
And you recognize that talking about Phase Three would be bad. Thank you.
Councilmember Francois?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chip, for the refresher on the project. It turned out beautifully, by the way. I'm really pleased with how it looks, and I was there at the grand opening, as I think a lot of us were. If you could just confirm for me, the, the public benefit, and it was a package of public benefits that were provided, right? The public benefits were needed or desired by the council back in 2012 because of the increased height limit on the Phase Three site?
Correct.
Not on the Phase Two site?
There wasn't, there was no need to increase the height. There was no availability to increase the height on the-
Okay. And then, was the Pringle Passage more than just a concept? There, there was going to be some sort of easement dedicated for public use, but were there any parameters put around it? Was it gonna be open just like a public street 24/7? I know there are gates there, but what was, was there anything in the record in terms of what the history of its purpose was?
Originally, I, you know, over the 10 years that, that, that project was, was developed, I don't, I don't know that it, it really boiled down to that yet. I think it was just public access. When we got towards the construction phase, then we started, there was, started talking about hours or limiting hours and, 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 you know, that kind of thing, and then it, and then it, I think as a, as COVID hit, I believe, and, and as the project came out of the ground and really developed further, I think it became clear to the developers that, that this space might not be the best location for, have to be open, especially 24/7.
Okay, and I think just one more for now. I recall a, a main topic of conversation when we were on the planning commission was the replacement parking, and the desire for the replacement parking to be constructed first, which indeed happened. And I, I thought that what was constructed was more than one-to-one of what was on the surface lots.
I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was 951 spaces were required, and it built 990? Is that, or is it six? Okay.
There's more. Okay. Let's see. I think that's, you, Councilmember Darling, had my question about the public art. I would like a, maybe a little more explanation of what's inside up the stairs, and I've walked it, but I can't say that I really paid attention to every mosaic. I should have. But if you can just describe kind of what, what's within the confines of the project, that would be helpful.
I think we're gonna see that one-
You can turn to your art friends and ask them to the microphone.
All right, I think we're gonna see that with their presentation.
Okay.
Well, also, but we may have some questions for staff from the arts as well. Mayor Protem?
Does the Pringle Passage represent any kind of risk for the, people who live in the, in the development?
I, I would go, I would, I would assume yes. Otherwise, we, we might not be going through this exercise.
Okay, like homeless people coming, and I, I hate to, I hate to say it that way because people see homeless people and they go, oh, they must be criminals. It's not always the case. But are there, are there any safety issues?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I have not personally walked this property, but I have looked at it on a map. So my understanding, and Captain Brown is joining me here, he'll have some more information because he's walked it a couple of times. It is in very close proximity to residents, so it could be a haven for peeping toms, people loitering, certainly littering and things like that, but I'm gonna turn it over to Captain Brown. He'll have better information than I do. Thank you.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Annie Brown, the Administrative Division Captain for the Police Department. I did walk this passageway and spent some time with the leasing manager today and last week as well, and the walkway is adjacent to some, you know, private patios that are, you know, very low, and so line of sight as people are walking through there. Also, you could, you could theoretically easily access the patios if you so desired. We haven't had any major issues or significant events there from a crime standpoint, but it certainly could happen. I don't know if that answers your question, if you have, you know, further concerns with the area. It just, it just exposes, it, it's possible that there could be issues in the future that just hasn't, hasn't been.
Thank you. Actually, let me do a follow-up there, but the gates have been locked, have they not? So the opportunity has been restricted?
I believe the gates are locked during the evening, but I'll let Chip answer that or the applicant.
They were locked this morning.
I, it's, it's my belief that the Pringle Passage has never been open for public access.
So what could, this is a could, based on the environmental design, as I think was the phrase that the chief used last night, and when we were talking about affordable housing and how to design, any housing, multifamily, how to design appropriately. Okay. Follow-up question.
Could you talk, either Chief or Captain Brown, about the, the two jurisdictions? Who has, is it BART and Walnut Creek PD that has jurisdiction over the Waymark, or where do those lines, kind of where are they delineated?
The Waymark is Walnut Creek's jurisdiction, and so then there's the BART property, property adjacent, and that obviously is, is patrolled by BART Police Department.
Both, both of the garages, the station, everything that's not the Waymark essentially right now?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I will have a question for the public art staff eventually, in terms of the value of the public art that's in the passageway as opposed to the stairway or the balustrades. And so they can work on figuring that out, or they can answer now if they're ready. Tap dance.
You don't want to see that.
For the record, Kevin Safin, Director of Arts and Recreation. I'm gonna have to ask my friends to help me out with this a little bit. There were two pieces of public art that were part of the Waymark development. One is on the corner, Pringle and California, called the B Effect, which is not affected by this. It's spectacular, by the way. And the other is the series of mosaics at the exterior stairway up through the passage from Pringle through to California. I can give you the total budget, and then I'll need a little help on the specific budget for the mosaics, if you have that, Emily?
So give us the total budget, and then after the applicant makes his, his, their presentation-
Right.
-we will-
Perfect.
-get a little more detail.
So the total budget for both combined was $816,000, and I'll have the numbers specifically for the mosaics in a moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that, one, that is 1%, that reflects 1% of the construction costs of the Phase Two, the Waymark itself.
Correct. And you may have added a little bit with some more mosaics, but that was the, that was the dollar amount for, as required by the Public Art Master Plan, yes.
Okay.
Short answer is yes, but they did a little bit more.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem?
This is, this is to remind me, to remind, to ask, the applicant to ask, that, that, what do you do in ordinary circumstances when you're doing a sort of upper-class, middle development of art-wise, whether you've got this law or not? That's my question. Think about it, please.
All right, thank you very much, staff. We will now open the public hearing and hear from the applicant. Thank you very much. You will have up to 15 minutes to present to us. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Councilmembers. My name's Ryan, I'm with Blake Griggs Properties. I'm here to represent Walnut Creek Transit Village Associates. My presentation will be relatively brief, since Chip did such a good job outlining the issue that we're here discussing tonight. So as Chip said, the, the real concern that we're trying to address tonight is one of safety. I would point out that the gates have been closed, you know, we've done that because we saw safety concerns early on, and we've had those concerns stated to us by residents, so it's something that we're very sensitive to. This is just an outline of the property, and you can see the Pringle Passage down the middle and the alternative route that goes down the side of the property that BART patrons would use to go to the office space. I would point out that, I think, Brad Griggs reminded me of this, when originally designed, there was supposed to be retail going down that Passail, and a public passage with retail makes total sense. I don't know if it was a leftover, you know, when we converted that retail to apartments, but, you know, just given where it is today, we wouldn't have designed it probably, you know, thinking about public access 24/7. I think as the sign says right now, it's 7:00 to 10:00 PM, but, you know, those night hours are obviously a concern. I'll also add that the public path of travel, by pushing it down to the corner of Pringle and Northern California, puts it by where the retail is now. So most of our retail space, with the exception of a coffee shop near the Great Hall, is on that hard corner. So anything we can do to increase foot traffic there is a benefit for those retailers. This shows you just some photos of what the Passail looks like. As pointed out by the police chief, it's a meandering path. There's a ton of landscape in there that looks great, and it's a beautiful passageway, but it just gives a lot of opportunities for people that are, you know, peeping toms or anything of the like to hide, wait for it to be dark, try and set up camp, or access the patios that are on the ground floor. This is a good representation of what kind of art we have within that Pringle Passage. These are six benches, you can see the mosaics at the bottom, and these are about three feet long by, you know, two feet high. They're, they're not very big, but those are along the passageway. These are two other planters that are part of those mosaics within the gates, larger pieces. And as stated, you know, if anybody wants to see this art, they're welcome to come to the leasing office, and we can schedule a tour. And if Walnut Creek wants to have scheduled tours with our leasing office, they're welcome to do that. This is art at either end of the Pringle Passage. The staircase, as Chip pointed out before, and then on these two columns shown in the lower right, that's mosaics that we actually added late in the game, so I think that cost us another $50,000 or so to have those installed. Here's the B Effect. That was also mentioned earlier, it's a great piece. It's on the corner of Pringle and Northern California, near the retail, so that art will stay available to the public. Here's same picture as you saw before, the Great Hall. The Great Hall space is about 4,500 square feet. It has a wet bar, it has opportunities for catering if food is brought in to keep that warm. It has a very large projector screen, it'd be great for speaker presentations, Chamber of Commerce meetings, things like that. Oh, and the capacity of the Great Hall is a little over 350 people. So that's really it. Again, Chip covered everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mayor Protem, did you have a question?
I did. So I did, I did want to know the contrast with what you would do ordinarily. Do you, for a similar upper-middle-class kind of building, would you put natural art, whether you had your arms twisted behind your back or not?
Well, from my experience, I've always been required to put public art in, so that's an easy answer for me. The art that we would put in otherwise, which we do, if you're in the Great Hall, you'll see the big mural of the coyote, is all focused on where it can be enjoyed by our residents and gets the most visibility from that standpoint. On the exterior of the buildings, you know, if there's an opportunity for art that we think makes sense, then we'll do it unnecessarily in every project you have put public art, unless required.
Okay. I have a couple of questions about the use of the, the room. The availability is limited to, according to your rules, limited between 11:00 AM and 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and no holidays. I understand everything except if you have an evening meeting starting at, say, 6:00, it is more likely than not, closing it at 9:00 PM is cutting that, that opportunity for that group short. Is there any flexibility in, in that?
Yes, that's a good point. I think there's certainly a flexibility in that. You know, the one thing that we're cognizant of is noise and the impacts on residents, so if we get an application that we thought that wouldn't be an issue, we'd be happy to extend those hours.
Okay. The second one is you have no religious or political organizations, and I, I think when I was talking to you, I used the example of last year when Walnut Creek was going to host the mayor's conference, and we all know mayors are very quiet people. Is that a political organization, or are there, how would you measure something like that, that is more ecumenical than just a political campaign?
Yeah, our intent there is more around fundraising events or anything that can be perceived where we're showing favoritism to one political person than the other. So we can modify that language to specify that, but what you described would certainly be allowed and appropriate.
Okay. My cohort says that it would be a governmental experience, not a political experience. Okay, all right. I think, oh, the, the groups are responsible for cleaning up the room, but, you know, anything that happens outside of the room that's sort of beyond their scope, is that covered by, do they have to make special arrangements?
It would probably be dependent upon the application if we thought something was gonna spill out into other areas, but in general, I would say no. I mean, anything that's outside of those walls is responsible of our property manager.
And security is clearly an issue for you and your tenants. Would the group be responsible for additional security?
Again, I think that'd be a case-by-case basis, but we have onsite security, so there's a, a basic level of security that we would provide, and if for whatever reason we thought more was required, we would work that out with the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Other question?
Oh, wait a minute, I have one more. Sorry, sorry. I apologize. How, how solid is the four total maximum a year?
It's, I mean, I'm open to suggestions if you want to increase that, certainly, but within reason.
Councilmember Francois?
Thank you, and I'm wondering if you had mentioned that, you know, if this alternative concept were embraced, that the public would still have an opportunity to see the internal art by arranging for a visit with the leasing manager. How would that, did you give it, have you given any thought to kind of how that would be advertised, or the, a member of the public would know that they would be able to access that and be able to view it?
Yeah, what we talked about with Chip was putting signage at either end of Pringle on the gates, so that, you know, if you wish to view the public art, please check in with the leasing office and probably provide a phone number. And that could be very easily done. I mean, you know, people walk in every day looking for tours of the property, so if someone wants to walk in and get a tour of the public art, that's-
And that would be available- And that would be available generally, your leasing agent, your leasing office hours are 9:00 to 5:00, Monday to Friday?
9:00 to 6:00, yeah.
You don't lease on weekends?
We do.
So that, and will that be true long-term?
Yes.
Once you get to 100%, which is never 100% because there's always something, someone moving?
Some people move it out, move it back in, yep.
Okay. Let's see. And would there be any resistance or reluctance on your part to the city advertising it more broadly than just signs on either end? If it were on some sort of public art walking tour or included on, you know, the arts and recreation page as an option for people to be able to visit and?
Anybody that wants to come visit the art is a potential tenant, so I would welcome them.
Smart man. Now, they, perhaps a harder question. On Phase 3, well, I'll start with an easier one. On Phase 3, the accessway that's always been the accessway from the corner of Ignacio and California to the BART station. It's open now. And Chip had made it clear that the city's desire and strong intent is that remain an accessway and just wanted to get any assurances or thoughts you could provide on, on that key kind of passageway from, from Ignacio and California to the BART station?
Yeah, I think we can commit to keeping that public. It's going to require design and thoughtfulness on our part. And, but that has been a thorough fair for as long as I've lived in this area. So I couldn't imagine taking that away.
And then maybe the harder question. What, what, do you have a sense of the timing of Phase 3?
I wish I did. We continue to look at how to make Phase 3 feasible. A lot of that has to do with discussions we're having with BART right now. A lot of it also has to do with greater economy and capital markets. So I don't think Phase 3 would break ground anytime before end of '25, '26. But if we can, you know, work out, you know, other issues in the project, we can maybe move forward with a planning application ahead of that.
And does, your group has control over that site now, or is that still BART?
No, we control it. It's under option.
And everything outside of the fence, is that BART or you?
Outside of the fence is.
Like on, on the Ignacio side, which is the landscape? It's not landscaping anymore, but it was at one time, kind of on that front, that edge?
That would get redone with the project, but it's BART, yeah.
That's BART currently? Okay.
Just to clarify, BART still maintains the whole property. They're responsible for the fence. So once, the way Mark finished, we pulled out our use permit and not doing anything on parcel 3.
Right. And I recall that there was some sort of bike pavilion and bike station that was part of Phase 3. Is that right? I don't know that it was identified as a public benefit as much as it was like a concept part of the project.
I think so too.
Yeah. Well, that, that's it for me now, for now. Thank you.
Cindy Darling. I couldn't see your light on.
I was, you were looking at me. So the Pringle Passage, if you access it from Pringle, you have to go up the stairs. And if it becomes a public passage, people would have to be able to access the elevator? Or would people have to be able to access the elevator to be compliant with ADA?
It would be.
Okay. And so right now, that elevator is only, you can only access it if you use your residence call button?
Correct.
And was the elevator designed with public access in mind?
It was. I would say it's another opportunity for, you know, someone that's not supposed to be there to, to hide out. So again, the elevator is part of the overall safety concern.
Okay. And then when we get to Phase 3, because I have faith in the capital markets and the everything coming around, when we get to Phase 3, that will be a separate discussion about public art and the, the application of our public art ordinances to that facility, and it'll have its own art. So we'll have that happening.
That opportunity, correct.
All right. Thank you.
So if we were to say tonight, first of all, thank you for the presentation, and I understand the issue. If we were to say tonight, hmm, it was intended to be a public passageway, what would you have to do in terms of investing in security in order to protect the space?
Well, we'd have to look at options of putting up potentially gates through the passageway. That's not ideal. You're going to walk down that, you're going to feel like you're in a cage. More patrol through there. But no matter how much man patrol you put on a property, people are always going to find a way around that. And then probably additional cameras. All of which, you know, don't, don't get to that level of security by closing off the gates and creating that sense of security for the residents.
Okay.
Yes.
So just to the, to that point, is it, is there an option or an alternative that the gates are open from 9:00 to 6:00 and then, or 9:00 to 8:00 or whatever, and then closed after that? Was that kind of option explored? Could you, why wouldn't that achieve kind of the safety intent, which I think is legitimate?
Yeah.
For having residents there?
Well, we found particularly in this, you know, post-COVID era, whether it's daytime or nighttime, that's not really a factor in terms of if people want to do mischievous things, they're going to do that. I mean, we have issues now. You know, where people, we're adding security to make sure they're not coming in behind cars in the garage, accessing from other points of the building. So daytime or nighttime, it's not making that big of a difference. And if you are daytime, you know, like I showed in the picture, there's a lot of opportunities to just sit there and hide if you wanted to. Yeah. Brad brought something up. So we've actually found people sleeping inside the units. This was mostly during, early on, when we were doing more leasing. But people broke into the building. They would sleep in the units. There were so many vacant units that we couldn't patrol them all. One guy actually even stole an oven out the unit down the stairs, which I'd never seen before.
So at that time, the gates were open unrestricted, and people could walk through that area?
At that time, the gates were closed at night. There was still a lot of construction going on. So people, the gates were open a lot for construction purposes.
And has there ever been kind of measurable foot traffic? I, I don't know that it ever had the opportunity to get to that point probably, but from the Golden Triangle, and there was COVID too, from the office buildings to the BART station? I guess there's not really a question there, is there?
No. I mean, the, the office building is 50% leased. It's 30% occupied at best.
Okay. Sorry, it was your question.
Oh, no. That's okay. So we, we're looking at a map that showed, and maybe you have the same map site. Has anyone projected the distance and the amount of time to walk from the bottom of the stairs around, down Pringle and then along the California edge to get to the, the same point if you walked through, up the stairs and through the passageway?
It's, I, I don't know the exact distance, but you're talking about a matter of 30 seconds in terms of walking.
Well, that's what I thought, but I wondered if anybody had counted the steps. I should have done that when I was there this morning, except I couldn't get into the gate. So how wide is the passageway? I could see it's narrow and meandering.
It varies between six and eight feet.
Six feet?
Six feet.
Eight feet. I hit his head and I hit her head. Okay. The, you showed us pictures of the additional art that's inside the passageway. How many pieces are, are those all separate? Are there six benches?
There are six benches in two of these circular benches, so eight.
Which are visible from the, the gate?
These two are visible from the gate.
But not the six benches?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I think I've had my questions answered. Thank you very much. We're now going to open it for any public comment for individuals that might be in attendance this evening. Does anyone wish to speak to us on this item? Please step forward. Feel like I should run the Jeopardy music, but that might take too long, and I could walk from the Pringle stairs to the Pringle, the opposite Pringle gate. All right. The, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for additional questions of staff. And I did ask for some clarification on the public art that is in the. And I know I, I should have sent this question in advance, but I couldn't tell what public art was actually in the passageway, so.
No, we, we were able to do the math. The, again, about $816,000 total for both pieces. I'll start with the B Effect. That was about 420, or 19, 420. The Mosaics was about 397, plus the 50 that the developer, the applicant, put in on their own.
So the Mosaics, what, is there any way to value the six benches that are sitting inside?
Well, you could just do a straight, you know, calculation on each.
By tile, by the square footage of tile?
Yeah. But that's, that's one way to do it. But we've not looked at it individually, piece by piece.
So there was a $50,000?
Supplement on the, the entry from California.
Oh, on the?
The two columns on, as you entered the gate from California by the BART station.
Okay. Thank you. Chip, I'm not sure the council members don't have other questions, but let's.
I do. So the Pringle Passage, you have to go upstairs and go across. If you go around the outside, do you go, there aren't any hills or anything. It's all pretty flat, so people with bad knees are okay with it. When it was built, where did you expect the people who were going to walk on it to come from? All of them from the Golden Triangle? Or that, you know, what, how much actual use did you really expect from outsiders, given that everybody's going to park in the garages that way and not walk that way? And I'm still trying to figure out who would go up and over other than simply to see the art?
Yes, the original intent was really for BART patrons getting off the BART station and then going over to the Golden Triangle. And that was just a way to pull them through. And again, when that was retail, you know, made a lot more sense.
Ouch. Thank you. That's an effective answer. Any other questions, Mayor Protem?
No.
Councilmember Francois.
So Chip, in kind of putting together the staff report and, and talking to the, the developer, did, was there any conversation about alternatives or to the public benefit? Or, or any quantification, which I think would be hard to do, of the Pringle Passage like we have with the artwork? Not necessarily a quantification, more a qualification in that, in that there would be access provided to, to see that art. Okay. And then, and then no real kind of conversations or discussions about kind of other options?
Other options? No, no, no. It just come, it was a, we asked for a, you know, a suggestion, and that, and that was it. It was anticipated for discussion around some of the, some of the limitations. Let's see, I think that's all I had. Thanks.
Councilmember Darling, any questions, further questions? I don't have any further questions either. Thank you. So counsel, we now need to have a discussion. It seems there's two questions really in front of us. One is, do we allow the passageway to be made private? And then if yes, what public benefit do we think is appropriate? Is this appropriate? Should it be strengthened? Should it be different? Councilmember Francois, can I start with you?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where the art fits into that as well, but, because I, maybe there's a third question of how to deal with the internal art. But starting with the first question, I think for the reasons that were described, the safety issues, the, and the original intent for it to be retail, and now it's residential. And I fully understand why that's the case. I can also speak kind of from my experience taking BART frequently before the pandemic and then stopping for a few years, and now back on BART again, that it's, it's somewhat of, it's a different environment than it was before the pandemic. And I, I'm sure that that's led to challenges with a residential project at the BART station, and I, I'm fully sensitive to that. But I also think it's brought in elements to the whole station that are more difficult to manage. I, I see it on a daily basis because I park in the new garage. And it's, so I think for all those reasons, I would be inclined to allow this passageway, which did, in concept, I think it was a nice idea for the, for office workers to have, to, to take that big monolith block and cut it in half and provide a shorter walkway for office workers to the BART station. I think at this, specifically at this juncture, that's probably not as high of a priority in terms of public benefits as it was before the pandemic. So I think times have kind of changed when it comes to that. Do you want to take on just that one and then?
Let's just take the, let's just take the first one. Because if we don't agree with the first one, then the conception of the same. Councilmember Darling.
So I, but thank you for everybody that's helped us walk through this issue. I've kind of struggled with it a little. When we originally approved the project, when I was on planning commission, I was not convinced that the, the Pringle Passage, because of the stairs, was really going to be the way that people would go. Because, you know, I remember looking at the grade change. It was a pretty significant grade change from the street up the stairs. And, you know, like, oh, you'd have to get in an elevator. People aren't going to get in an elevator to walk to BART. And so as far as all the different elements of the project, the Pringle Passage was less important to me. And with the changes that have taken the retail out of that area, I don't see as much, I can see the validity in what they're asking for. And so I would be willing to entertain taking that private if we can come up with the right package to go with that.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
All I can think of is there are young people in, in, that live in that, that area of the buildings. And if, if one of those children got picked up and taken away, we'd never forgive ourselves for not taking advantage of this opportunity. I really, I really, I know I'd be nervous if there is a, a low wall and people could look in all the time. I think they deserve to have privacy and confidence that they're, they're going to be safe. So I'm pretty much sold on the idea of keeping the gates there.
And I agree with my colleagues. I think it's important, public safety is very important. Things have changed since COVID. But I've been here long enough to know that the original concept was that there would be retail along there that would be supportive to the Golden Triangle and the employees of the Golden Triangle. And so the back and forth was likely to be appropriate. And the, the switch to residential occurred somewhere in 2010, 11, 12. And we didn't have enough conversation about whether the passageway was really going to work very effectively. And so I am supportive of making this a private passageway. And I think what we have, we can't actually have a motion and a vote on that because the resolution and the adoption of the environmental.
Correct.
Are separate from it.
The council should just, can work with the kind of consensus you developed and then focus on
All right.
any issues associated with the, the return of benefits to the city. And then we can incorporate any modifications that you may identify into the resolution.
Okay. So, Councilmember Francois, let's start the conversation, if you would, about what public benefit. And what I appreciated in your questions early on was the public benefit was really necessitated by the change in height on Phase 3, not anything to do with Phase 2.
Yeah. And I think that's important because I think what we've seen in other projects, and, you know, especially thinking of the Viamonti project out in Shadlands. And that we've tied kind of these public benefits to something within the vicinity of that project, kind of looking for pedestrian improvements. of that project, kind of looking for pedestrian, um, improvements, bicycle improvements in the Shadlands area. So I, I think that, that providing a, a public benefit that's perhaps more tied with phase three, because the burden is being created by phase, well, just stepping back, I, um, the, I, I know we had a few letters, not a ton, and there's nobody here in the public here tonight, and, um, but one of, the, the email that we got, I think it was from Ms. Attoni, kind of struck me that looking for something a little more tangible and commensurate with the Pringle Passage concept. And so when I look at the, the public, the limited, I would call it limited public use of the Great Hall, to me, the scales don't quite balance out on that. And it could be part of a package, maybe with other items, but I'm not sure if we look back kind of at what our guiding direction was, at least in the general plan, was that, you know, we would have exceptional public amenities. They could be roof gardens, public plazas, creek orientations. I'm not sure how that would be accomplished on that site.
Let's not build a creek.
Public courtyards and passageways, landscaping, public art, and other desired public amenities. And I think that last one is pretty broad. Uh, so, um, I guess my, my inclination would be to, uh, kind of direct staff to have a further conversation with the developer about, um, an alternative public benefit that we felt matched this language and was maybe more geographically tied to the phase three site, with the understanding that, um, you know, because the burden would be created when the phase three development happens, that the benefit should be provided essentially at the same time, and that we're not, that we're looking at the site holistically and then also kind of balancing it out that way. And I, I do agree with, with Commissioner Darling that the.
Commissioner.
No, sorry. We're going way back. Yeah, you're a council member now.
Come on, come on into the 2020s.
Okay. Councilmember Darling, that, that one I never re, I don't recall that one rising to being the top, um, public benefit. I know parking was a really important issue back in the day, and.
That's probably tied to the parking structure.
Yeah, uh, which was provided. And so there are, have been, uh, and again, it's, it's a beautiful development. There's a giant compass that I can still enjoy when I walk down the side of the building. I have never walked through the passageway other than, uh, when I've visited and toured the site at the grand opening. I really enjoy the B exhibit, I, I don't, with the flowers.
The B effect.
The B effect. Um, I think that's really, I think that's a great piece of California art, and I real, I enjoy seeing that at the station. So I think there are other opportunities. We don't have to get so bogged down and weighed down with one mid-block crossing that is not really, it's kind of a road to nowhere, that we can look at the whole site a little more holistically and hopefully have that opportunity with phase three sooner, rather than later to, I don't know that there's a huge rush for us to, we can direct staff to have those conversations with the developer and see if they can reach some sort of an agreement that could be brought back to the council that we can, uh, talk about.
Related to phase three.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Darling. We're blowing up the resolution if we.
We, we are, we are adding another step for step. I, I agree with, um, Councilmember Francois.
I called him mayor most of the year, so.
That, um, you know, Pringle Passage was not, there were far bigger fish to fry in the public benefit package, and we really appreciate, you know, building the garage first, doing, you know, the extra spots in the garage, um, the public art that's outside of this. I would be interested in looking at this in two phases, kind of where we are right now with phase two on the ground, temporary access, you know, access to the public art when people want to, access to the Great Hall, but then when we get to phase three, which is where the height comes in, then we have an obligation that gets passed forward to phase three to provide some public benefit. And because we are going to have the Paseo there, there's opportunities there to, to go back and capture some of what we're trying to do, you know, that, that's the entrance to the city kind of thing. And we always talked about how it was, you should be able to look down it and have a great view and have art around you. So I would be willing to entertain a phased approach to the public benefits with an interim when phase two is in place and an obligation to come back as part of phase three.
So interim, are you saying the Great Hall?
The Great Hall, the access to the public, um, and the ability for the city to enter, to advertise that there is the public art there in the, the Pringle Passage and that people would be welcome to come and, and view it, as long as they weren't camping on it.
Mayor Protem?
I'm sure glad that I waited until Councilmember s, soon-to-be Mayor Protem, Cindy, um, gave the, gave her opinion, because I think that is probably one of the very best ways of balancing it out. Um, and, and I was gonna lobby for more meeting space, because I know that downtown, we don't have anything that I can think off the top of my head that's equivalent for meeting spaces for nonprofits and, and people who are gonna do good for our community. But I can understand, and you're not fully booked yet, and when you build the last section, um, you still won't be fully booked, so until that's, that's all there, um, it would be a, it would be nice to have someplace like that for, for the community. Um, and yeah, I don't think that should be the end result, and, and thank you for figuring that out for me. Um, the end result should be something pretty special, and, um, I, I'm looking forward to see what it's gonna be. I hope I live that long.
So I'm generally in alignment with my colleagues. Um, I believe that what was very helpful in reading the staff report was the reminder that the fa, what is, we call phase three, but the east side of the, um, BART station property only had a thirty-five-foot height limit, and that we raised it to fifty feet as part of this entitlement process, and that is what triggered the need for a substantive community benefit. It wasn't, oh, you're building at the BART station, or. I am not as convinced that the Great Hall is a, it's, it's a nice public benefit, but we tried to make it work, and Ryan knows that, for the mayor's conference. It is a hard space to reconfigure, and it would be a very expensive space for anyone to rent unless they're just renting it for a meeting, for using the conference tables and the configuration as is, and it's a nice offer. I think it also will be difficult to program when it's four times a year. It's, if you wanna say the first Monday of the month, that's, that's something people can remember, but four times a year becomes hard to manage for the public. Eventually, it will be no times during the year, because it will be very difficult to keep track of. The, um, I appreciate that most of the public art, art is actually visible from outside. The stairs are visible and the columns, you can walk up and touch them, and you can see the two pedestal seating areas or planter boxes. So I appreciate that most of it is visible and that they would work with staff to, um, I hope it can be on, on the public art tour that might occur once every four months. I am more inclined to say that the public benefit should really be tied to phase three, because that's what triggered it, or, and will in the future, and that that conversation should really be. In the meantime, we can do the small things, because just in case we don't know phase three, it might take ten years. I hope not, but if it does, then, um, the public benefit would come, it could be just a little greater contribution to the public art requirement that will be triggered in the, um, phase three. It could be a little more contribution to affordable housing. It could be something like that, but something that the public at large sees a benefit in. And a, a rentable, or, a free space four times a year isn't great access for the public, and I think that might be. The other thing I want to make note of is that when the, the design of the project evolved, that passageway became a design element, because you can't design one big blocky mass. That passageway has created light and air and visibility. For it to be private now is totally appropriate, but it's not a lost benefit. I think the, the developer has benefit accruing from it as well. So we kind of have a trend. What are you hearing, city attorney? And do we have any hope of salvaging the resolution that's in front of us, or do we need to give you direction?
Yes, um, in talking with the city manager and, and, and the community development director, we think that the appropriate direction would be to direct staff to have the conversations that the council has been talking about, guided by your collective discussions, in terms of how we would put together a revision to the resolution, and then the thought would be that we would come back to the council, uh, early in the new year with the revised resolution. We think that's better than trying to actually revise the resolution right now, because the, the concepts that the council has talked about, I think even the council anticipated discussions with the applicant to, uh, come up with something that is both, uh, addressing kind of the, the shorter term and the longer term that's associated with phase three. So staff feels like we have sufficient direction from the council to be able to have those conversations with the, um, with the applicant and then to bring back a finalized version of a resolution.
Would it be helpful to have a motion that at least lets the applicant know, or the developer know, that we are es- essentially in agreement to rescind the, um, public nature of the passageway pending?
Uh, yeah, uh, staff's fine with that, and I, and I think that would, you know, that would be memorializing the, the, the direction that we heard from the council.
Can you give us quick language for that, so that we don't fumble around here at eight o'clock at night?
Yeah, so, so understanding that there is gonna be some discussions that will go on back and forth between the applicant and, and staff, we would say that the council would, uh, entertain a motion to direct staff to, um, engage in conversations with the applicant on an approach that would involve, um, uh, removing the commitment that the Pringle Passageway be open to the public, perman, permanently, as was originally anticipated, and that instead, we would work on, um, interim access that would be, I think I understood, I heard from the, the council's comments, that it would be, that the council seemed to be okay with the idea that it would be upon, you know, during the leasing hours, uh, with knowledge to the leasing agents, that they would ask for permission to go in, but if somebody did, they'd have access to it, so you're maintaining it. And that there would be, um, there, I don't think there's complete clarity on the part of the council right now about whether or not the Great Hall, uh, offer stays in or not, so I think staff would talk about that unless the council directs us otherwise. And then the third part would be to discuss the, the, kind of the more permanent public benefit that would be associated with phase three, and, and that would be kind of, um, more, uh, in relation to the, um, to the fact that the impact is actually coming with phase three, so that there would be something more physical, something more permanent, that would be in the form of a more typical community benefit.
I just, I just want to weigh in, cause I don't think I weighed in on the interim. I think the rest of you did. I, I do see some, I do see the value in, uh, having something now, not just letting Pringle Passage go away and not have so, having something in the interim. I don't know that it has to, it, I'm not advocating that it be the permanent public benefit, because I don't think it rises to that level, but, and unless and until phase three is on board, I like the idea of an interim, uh, public benefit to replace the Pringle Passage. Um, I've been in the space, it's, it's really lovely space. Uh, I, I haven't moved the furniture around in it, so I don't know what that entails, but, um, I, I personally would like to see that included, and, uh, so.
Yeah, and I agree with, I, you know, I was looking at originally thinking, oh, wow, you could have a school auction here, it'd be so cool, and then I realized, no, that, that's not gonna work. But there are things that you can do in that space, and I think it would be a useful place for different nonprofit groups. It's not the end-all, be-all, but I would be interested in including that in, as part of the package, even if you can't have a crab feed.
So I need somebody to make, do you want to restate the motion with all that?
Yeah, I, I can, but.
And one of us will say so moved.
Understanding that there's, the council has multiple concepts at play here, so the first, the first part of the mo, it would be a motion to direct staff to work with the applicant to, uh, one, remove the permitted access requirement that was associated with the prior approvals, permanent public access. Two, to provide the interim, uh, public benefits that it sounds to me would be in the form of, uh, public access upon request to the leasing agent during the normal leasing hours, and two, the continued use of, uh, some, of the, a Great Hall on some periodic basis that we'd identified. They've proposed four times. I've heard the council talk about four, maybe plus. And then the third part is really the, is, is the part that I think is a little bit more open right now, and that's the, that's the permanent, uh, public benefit that's exchanged that really associates with phase three and is part of the phase three development, based on the fact that the additional height is really a benefit to the phase three development. And that's, that's something that staff would, would discuss with them and bring back to the council.
And just a quick question, the staff report references determining that the current EIR is enough for that. Do we need to?
You don't need that tonight, because you're just giving us direction to go negotiate, and then we'll bring the resolution back, and, and that resolution will incorporate the same EIR line again.
Thanks. I move to do what our city attorney said.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Darling?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for clarity, Steve, I think you said public access, and you were obviously intending to the internal public art.
Uh, I, I, I did, thank you. And I, I said access, I, I should have said public benefit as well, too, for the phase three. Thank you.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Francois?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Paskey?
Aye.
Mayor Solva?
Aye.
Question carries. Um, thank you very much, and I hope the conversation, um, we can reach a fruitful agreement, and, um, look forward to having it come back. Don't anyone go away, we're closing tonight's meeting, um, in honor of Jim Hale. Um, we're about to close tonight's meeting in memory of James Hale, who was a longtime Contra Costa resident and active member of the community, and who, he passed away at the age of seventy-two in the middle, in mid-October. He, um, went to Ocalanis High School, has a master's degree in zoology and wildlife biology, and his, basically, he was a zoologist and wildlife biologist, biologist, and worked as a professional ecological consultant for more than forty-seven years throughout California, but in particular in Contra Costa. He was an expert on wildlife and natural, um, and local regional wildlife and Native American cultural history, and he was particularly involved in creek issues, including our local creeks, as well as, he was vice chair of the Contra Costa County Fish and Wildlife Committee, and he was pres, vice president of Friends of the Creeks. Um, at the centennial celebration, I remember him at, um, Heather Farm, and he was mate in an exhibit of local history, and he and my husband had a fascinating conversation, because of course Tom is very interested in California history. He will be greatly remembered for his work locally in, um, our open spaces, wildlife, and particularly the creeks. He will be missed, but his work will be flowing through our creek areas forever, so thank you very much to James Hale, and we will miss you. And with that, this meeting is closed.